Well, everyone, it is officially six o'clock, so I'll call to all the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Fargo City Council Meeting, roll call please.
Chris Powell.
Here.
Audrey Weasel.
Here.
Free Greg.
Here.
Tony Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Stoneball. Kevin Andrews. Paul Dittmars. Here. Susan.
Here.
Remove the public comment. Anyone have any public comments?
I have a female, this chair from a constituent, she couldn't make it tonight, she was into like editor, and she just, she wanted you to tweet it, unbiased, and she wanted you to know, to all the city council members and break the off record. Um, here's the council members, we wanted to weigh in on the issue of allowing golf carts on the streets of Prairie Grove. Matt and I live inside of this neighborhood, this neighborhood is golf cart heavy, we won't get into whether it's a good idea or not, although we know that so many people have been ran, there is no golf course nearby. Our main concern is that those skinny children under their legal driving age that are at the wheel of such vehicles. We have personally seen them drive the carts as far apart, and have on numerous occasions seen them go from streets to sidewalks to avoid oncoming traffic. These carts are often full of youngsters and not just the drivers. Mothers in the neighborhood have posted signs asking drivers to be aware of children. This neighborhood is wonderfully kids centered, and we would hate for something unfortunate to happen and someone gets seriously injured because children with no knowledge of the rules of the road, and who aren't paying attention to their surroundings are operating or drive carts on city streets. We appreciate the state of this issue, and only allow citizens to open up illegally drive operating vehicles on the street of Prairie Grove. Sincerely, Shannon and Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am. There are no public comment, we'll move to the approval of.
I'm, I'm not sure we're good, but mine is on the back of what she just read regarding the golf carts and scooters.
Ma'am, can you stand up for your second name?
Yes. So I didn't know which part I went on, so.
Just now.
Right now is your time.
I've been here, she said, what was she talking about?
About cars.
So you do get three minutes, when you get close to one, I'll, I'll try to kind of.
Okay, I got my timer up, let me just. You my name or anything?
Yes, ma'am, please, name and address.
All right, Lisa T. Garden, seven oh four Sedgwood Drive, Prairie Grove, seven two seven five three. And it's regarding the kids that are driving scooters and golf carts, this is an ongoing issue. They don't obey the law, they cut out in front of you, they don't stop at stop signs. Um, when you try and engage with the parents, which we did last night, because we told everybody you need to stop. This is your warning, the next time we're gonna call PD, we've made numerous calls to PD. And they're very helpful, but their hands are tied, they don't have enough people, they can't respond every time, there's some little one out there. Uh, the, she went and got her dad, he came back over in his golf cart with his wife, and uh, he was like, you need to mind your own business, no, in the climate of today, if you see something, you say something. I don't want to see a kid hit out here, because then it's gonna be pointing to the driver, it's not the driver's fault. These kids, they run this top saying they have complete disregard for the rule of law, for adults, or anyone out there. They think they just own the road and can do whatever they want. Um, Arkansas does hold parents accountable for minors' actions, it's reckless conduct, and they may be held because of reckless and malicious conduct of their child. Parents have a duty to control, they have to, a duty to exercise reasonable control of their mild minor child, especially when they have the ability to do so, and they know the tendencies of their child to violate the law, which these parents do out there, because we stop them and we tell them, I've experienced it where one little girl's driving the golf cart and she's playing with the kid on the scooter, I almost hit them, I called PD that day as well. Uh, also, the parents in Snyder's Grove, they think the road is their playground, the toys are out there for the kids to play, it's not, it's an obstacle course, the kid's gonna get hit.
We have one minute left.
Okay. Um, we bring this to you today because when we moved here eleven years ago, it was a great community, we loved to, to, we loved it here. But right now, the builders have taken over, and the, the rule of community, how it was, is no longer here. Um, we just want a safe place before a kid gets hit. Year ago, two kids were hit, they weren't killed over by the school, changes were made to make that a better implement that. Um, we just want a change to happen before there's a body count. If there's gonna be a golf court on the road, then it needs to be one of the low speed vehicles, you can register those with the state, they have a VIN number, they, and they're, they're street legal. Back in the day, you couldn't drive many, uh, a dirt bike on the road because it was not street legal. Needs to be the same thing with scooters, with golf carts, there's no place for them on the road, there's gonna be a kid that gets killed.
Thank you.
I would like to go next, very short, very brief.
Go for it.
Same address, Rafa Davis, prior to GHS investigative. I'm just gonna say this. I was a priority one investigator in the state of Oklahoma, I hired, I was hired for night shift, I follow pedophiles around. I'm gonna say this, you have pedophiles in this community, like you do any other. You have people that are out there at night, these kids are on these scooters at night out here. You can't see them, there's no lights on their scooter, they're either gonna get hit, or they're gonna be hijacked, or one of the other, I don't know which. And I'm gonna tell you this, I'm, I'm fed up with it, I'm so fed up, I can't even see straight anymore. From this point out, I am gonna start making referrals to the state, to the investigative unit, for every parent that does not control their child.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Here are none, we'll move to the approval, minutes before y'all approve it, we had one quick change, I'll put it in front of you guys. It's all long range planning, last month, we adjusted the timeline for RB Hutch and our contract with them, we stored them September first, twenty twenty five. We didn't have that previously added to the minutes, so that's the only line that has been added to the minutes, otherwise, um, what was sent to you guys. So with that, they move for a motion to approve. I do have a motion.
Second, second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. So, same song. Motion, policy, please. Presses report, we sent you all July and August, so we have finally caught back up to where we should be, you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Here are none, we'll move it to audit. We do have an award presentation tonight. We, uh, we did not go to the last municipal league. My, my executive mayor, right here, Tony Cunningham, um, he has been awarded the Adrian White Municipal Leadership Award. It is in honor of our former mayor, Adrian Wyatt of Pocahontas, who served as the league president in nineteen seventy one. Um, this award is hereby, is hereby bestowed upon the honorable Tony Cunningham, council member of Prairie Grove, for six years of dedicated service to the Arkansas Municipal League. Congratulations. You got a picture? You need, you need one, Lauren?
She's gonna share.
Congratulations, thanks, sir. The, we have a presentation from the historical museum, I don't see them.
I don't think anybody's here, so I think they've either forgotten or.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item eight, which is our unfinished business, so ordinance to authorize the use of utility task vehicles on the city streets before we move to a motion and a vote on this. Oh, I want to remind everyone, I think we said this over the last three months, that no matter which way a vote goes, someone's happy and someone's not so happy. And so, just be respectful, I had four kids, and so to say, what do you want to eat, it was four different directions, it doesn't always work out. Um, but we do ask for respect in the process of this, we spent the last four, possibly five months on this one, so there's been a lot of research ongoing, so with that, we have an ordinance to authorize the use of utility task vehicles on the city streets.
Move like the words of third reading.
I do have a motion by Doug, a second by Kevin.
An ordinance to authorize the use of utility task vehicles on city streets. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Prairie Grove, Arkansas, that, section one, type, this ordinance shall be known as twenty twenty five UTV ordinance. Section two, chapter eight point four zero, add, new chapter eight point four zero is added to Prairie Grove Municipal Code to read as follows. Chapter eight point four zero, utility task vehicles, eight point four zero point zero one, use on city streets authorized. Following the effective date of this ordinance, electric powered utility task vehicle, as that term is defined in ACA twenty seven twenty one one oh two five, shall be allowed to operate on city streets. Eight point four zero, point zero two, functional equipment, every UTV operated on city street shall be equipped with the equipment required under ACA twenty seven twenty one one oh eight C. Eight point four zero point zero three, operational restrictions, every UTV operated on city street shall be operated in accordance with requirements found in ACA twenty seven formal one one oh seven C. Eight point four zero point zero four, registration requirement. Every UTV operated on city street shall register said UTV with the city annually and display their registration sticker on roll cage, on driver's side, front roll bar. Eight point four zero point zero five, use on streets limited. No UTV may be operated on any segment of the street or highway within the city with a speed within in excess of thirty five minutes per hour. UTVs may not operate on Heritage Parkway, US Highway sixty two, or down the street from Heritage Parkway to State Park, US Highway sixty two B. Eight point four zero point zero six, use in city parks. Registered UTVs may be driven on driveways and designated parking lots on Green Park, Mark Park, Buddy Ford Park, the Donald Park Tennis Complex, or any other designated city park. Any other use within city parks is prohibited under chapter twelve point zero eight of Prairie Grove Municipal Code. Section three, effective date, this ordinance shall become effective from and after sixty days following opposed to unless an emergency clause is attached. Section four, repealing clause, ordinances are passed thereof in force every time that this ordinance shall take effect, other in conflict here will or hereby repeal. Section five, saving clause, nothing herein shall be deemed to affect any rights or obligations, just against the time and capacity of those orders. Section six, severability law, if you amend any portion of this ordinance, the player did not operate for invalid as a result of a statute or judicial decision, where only that portion of the rest of the subject player can be interacted with for invalid. Shall be effective hereby, and all of the provisions hereof shall remain applicable.
So I do have a motion and a second, relax, we'll go call vote.
We need to have a motion to approve it. Motion. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Doug, a second by Kevin, so it's true, put it, and then we'll go to vote.
Yes.
To approve the third reading, and then we'll go to roll call.
Um, Chris Powell.
No.
Audrey Weasel.
No.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
No.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Dittmars.
No.
Susan.
Well, motion does fail, and we'll go to new business. An ordinance approving a rezoning of certain lands owned by Fitzgerald Construction, at eleven seventy Vine and Grove Road, from eight one to all one five.
Where are these two somewhere?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I got you.
I knew there was a couple on Vine, I'm imagining.
This is the, this is the old two story.
White House.
Stand in White House, on Vine and Grove, just past.
It'd be like, man, are you gonna walk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do it.
The mayor will.
Is that the one he was tearing out?
The old central house that got torn down.
Yeah, yeah.
I watched the video. We're bugging on, sweating or too bad.
It'll be a rezonance of one, to all one five, which matches everything else in Ohio, we're not, he's just building up, he's building another home now. So it's that White House, Vine and Grove.
Oh, no, he tore it completely down.
I'm sorry, don't.
It's gone. He brought us the plans to planning commission, and they were really pretty.
Beautiful homes and house study plans on buildings.
It's really nice.
Essentially, he bought that plan to build a house on, so eight nine, and fall from horse up the hill, it's not efficient, okay, man. Um, when it came into my building permit, because it was less than eight one acre, he couldn't deal with that in the law. So rezoning made sense, we'd already rezoned two other lots on that same stretch right there just recently, so he asked basically the same zoning that they received.
Move approved order, or move, move spin rules place order first ring around Tyler, I Joe, second, Danny. You didn't wanna read that whole one?
I have a motion by Doug, a second by Kevin. Rule call, please.
Chris Powell.
Uh, yes.
Audrey Weasel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Dittmars.
Yeah.
Susan.
Yeah.
An ordinance to provide for the rezoning of certain lands in Prairie Grove, Arkansas, currently owned by Fitzgerald Construction, modification of the zoning map and amendment of the zoning ordinance.
Move first, then rules, wait, second, third reading, adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I don't know who got the second, I have a motion by Doug, I think a second by Paul. Um, any further discussion? Here are none, roll call.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Audrey Weasel.
Yes.
Free Greg.
Yes.
Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Doug Stoneball.
Yes.
Kevin Andrews.
Yes.
Paul Dittmars.
Yes.
Susan.
Motion bases, or ordinance bases. Item B, a resolution to accept the bid from WFC Incorporated for the construction of three pickleball courts at a hundred thirty thousand eight hundred dollars.
This is on the north side of the tennis courts, uh, we did a sealed bid, we advertised for bid, and we had five, and it varied from a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and ninety nine. And so, I think this company's out of Springfield, it's been by the monster, so, I rented it with them, so.
And we are, we originally wanted.
He just waiting on us to approve it.
I feel, I feel like that was lower, right, the hundred and thirty, wasn't that kind of lower than we expected?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we wanted to stay one hundred and five, one fifty, and so we were, we were really pleased, we had another one about one fifty two, and the rest of them were well above that.
And we originally lined item one twenty five fold, so we're just a little bit higher.
That part out of, out of what?
And this is a turn heat job with the dirt work and everything.
Everything was done, like you don't have to touch it.
Yep, not until he's done, and then we'll do some site restoration, the seeds grow, and things like that.
Okay.
But, uh, fences, lights.
All of it. Good.
How many?
Good job, Chuck.
You go.
It will be three new courts.
Are you thinking Chris should we vote for?
Uh, I think we should. Is there gonna be parking?
Uh, we'll add additional parking to the existing parking there for tennis court, through the plan that has.
Okay. But that's not part of the one third.
That's not, that's not part of this, yeah. Okay. And, uh, yeah, I, uh, I'll give it to you.
Make a resolution.
Make a resolution to approve the one hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred dollars for the new pickleball courts.
Second.
I have a motion by Chris, and a second by Tony, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, some, resolution passes, you need to leave. Said my city person needs to walk out, so I asked if she stayed for the voting, we would be good, and then I'll, I'll do the rest from reports of committee, so sanitation, super.
Um, thank you, going real well in sanitation, uh, it's getting murderish, so this is our time of the day, I mean, tragics. And we, as I say, we meet the mayor, and you know, some of the supervising staff are entertaining the idea of the sidearm truck for, for next purchase. Uh, for two reasons, uh, the biggest is, is drivers retained. You know, the sanitation job is a hard job already, in the hot summer time, in the cold winter time, when it's raining, you're wet, you're handling materials that, people are, honestly, are just thrown away. So with the sidearm truck, they don't have to handle manually, it's all down with the remote arm, uh, we've already been, I've already done one, advertised for bid, make sure we could afford to go that route for one or two. We do have funding available for that. The drawback is, we'll have to do away from the bags eventually. You know, there, there'll still will be time to use both systems, but eventually we'll go away from the bags, because the, the sidearm truck will only pick up sixty four and ninety six gallon cans, it won't even pick up the small ones. Um, speed of the route is the second thing, uh, every subcontractor we talk to, but possibly go to the third party contractor, which I think we all know is gonna be a, a bad idea typically, because if we ever give it up, we'll never get back. You know, can't afford to start up the service all over again, if we lose that, then, uh, unrealistic, everything, we go back to it. But, but that said, uh, well, so reduce the amount of labor that we have, and increase efficiency of how, how quick we can do it. The two contractors between the mayor and the office in the past, both said they could run our entire city as it is right now in two days. Right now, we run five days.
And.
They do the same.
Four employees in it, on sanitation.
And we have six employees in sanitation, so we have two on each vehicle, we've done three trucks, five days.
They're running several recycling routes out there.
Yeah, two, two days they run recycling.
So check your, like, if you got a side, sidearm loader truck, that cuts down like one employee, right? Because you have, you have one driving, one loading, right?
Yes, and so.
So, but it also cuts down on time, because it takes longer for that arm to come out, grab the bag, or grab the thing, dump it. When they could just run and throw it in, right?
It's, it's a lot faster with the sidearm truck than it is.
It is faster?
It is fast.
They're dumping with the, it's, they're still in the back, they're dumping.
Okay, okay, I was thinking it'd be slower, because you know, guy can just run down the street.
Most old municipalities in North Carolina, Arkansas, have gone with the sidearm truck, so there is used trash trucks out there that we could purchase, but you never know when you're gonna get a used one. And they're all going to the sidearm vehicles, or probably retain it, depending on the speed at which they can get it done.
Okay.
It eliminates manpower, so it eliminates overhead, and truck never calls in sick, never goes on vacation, and you never have to skip.
We, we have, we have two negatives that y'all really need to focus on, except one, you're gonna get rid of bags. So that compresses our, uh, ten different levels that we offer down to two courts, and, because there's only two sizes. Um, the employee stuff, I, I honestly, we think it's a good thing, because we have a few that's getting old enough for retirement, and then as we grow, we'll, we just wouldn't replace them, and then we'd never want to lay off someone, so then we'll move other people as we grow into that, so I don't want y'all overthinking that, like, we kind of have a game plan, for buying one now, so we can use it in the bigger subdivisions that we're growing into, and, but like, for y'all, you have to think, do we want to get rid of bags and go, go courts? And then, it's just a price difference on the, the truck itself. Um, we, we both firmly believe that going third party is not, I mean, we've checked into this, we've talked to it all, we don't want to do that, but we do think that the future is moving into the, that, that idea of being productive, and being fast, and, and to, to reduce employees in the process, but not, I don't want y'all thinking, yes, just not having to continue to.
I don't think, worst case scenario, you know, is always an issue, but we did have a sanitation worker step off a truck in ice last year, and he, and he broke his leg. And he was in a boot, and he was one of the guys that really wants to work, so he actually brought me a doctor's slip after about four days off, that said with his air cast, he could go ahead and work his sanitation. So I used him somewhere else.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, you can take away that opportunity for someone to hurt their back picking something up, or slipping and falling, you know, and, and implement weather.
So, are, are you, are you for the sidearm truck?
Yes.
Okay.
So the other side that I want y'all to think about as well, too, so everything's on the table, is how do we move to that? So the thought was with one truck, that we would start using the, just the newest subdivisions that we're building right now, but that, when we're talking about moving away from bags or courts, if that's your ultimate decision, long range, is that we would start from the moment y'all make that decision, that the only thing we would do was sell courts, and anyone who's on bag service, but let's just say that we make that decision January twenty twenty six, we would give them a calendar year, so by January twenty twenty seven, we would.
So, I'm, I'm back up.
That's why, that's why I'm, I'm disappointed, but that way it gives the customer full year to adjust and get ready to work what we're doing.
One thing, too, you say we want to test this in subdivision, you have to remember one of the big complaints in subdivisions is cars, or parts in streets, blocking routes and stuff, so that's true. We might have to look into something along that line as well. Can, can the trucks get to the garbage stalls?
They have to be, they have to be accessible on the first.
Yeah. But if, 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 if there's cars, if there's cars parked on these other driveway, and again, your truck coming up, and you can't reach the thing, again, get it up.
Yeah, that's correct.
And the issue is, if, if somebody comes home from a football game and forgets, and marks in front of it, you know, if you're a high school student, and the truck comes through at seven thirty the next morning, before he takes off to go to high school, the trash doesn't get picked up.
True.
And so, and, and that is an issue, and.
Is there a second option where they could bring it down somewhere, do you throw it away?
We could, we could do a drop off center.
Like, do, like, at, at the, at the place, like, do, like, hey, come drop it off if you, if it messed up.
We hate to overpromise anything, but we, we're pretty good at being.
Yeah.
Small town and talking people, but we, we don't want anyone's trash sitting at the two weeks.
No, it's awesome, really, it's good.
What we're looking for now is just guidance on whether we feel like we can attain that one year after January one of twenty twenty six, so we make it to whether or not to order this truck.
Right.
Because if we don't order this truck, then I'll have to open up.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll have to do that.
Any important, or, 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 or.
I will tell you that most of my sanitation staff are very excited about the sidearm truck.
So they are, okay.
Because they're not getting out in the weather all the time, but we also have to realistically give all of our customers a chance and an opportunity to gradually move over into that, it's not something we can just do.
Okay.
It's gonna be a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty days, once we ask or tell them to room with, or that truck.
So what's the price difference between a sidearm one to?
Seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand, something, okay.
One employee.
It's one employee for one year.
Yes. Um, so I have the small trash can, it's about what I work, so like, well, our, like, you pay more for bigger ones, so everyone will just have to pay more for trash that got.
Everybody will go to the level of a sixty four or a ninety six gallon can.
All the, all the other providers only use a ninety six gallon can flat rate, but they offer curbside recycling with the ninety six gallon can, plus the grass clippings.
Of course, they charge a fee for each one of those.
What's the, do you know the price difference truck between the small can and the?
No, I know, uh, two bags a week's around eleven dollars, and a can is about twenty one dollars.
So, my question is, so if they already have a smaller can, are they gonna be, are they gonna have to pay, or that, they're, they're gonna have to pay their whole?
Are we gonna trade cans with them?
And so we would probably look at different ways to trade cans now, you know, uh, and there are just sanitation grants out there that we could look for that maybe offset some of that cost. The trouble is, the people already have the ninety six gallon can, we go back and try to reimburse them for the purchase that they already have, because they're not using the bag service, because those.
I think if you're on bags, you gotta, you have to buy your can, you're gonna buy bags anyways. Man, I go in and buy bags, I'm like, Chris, I'm on the bag.
Bags are like.
I think, I think.
You would go and buy your can instead of buying a bag, but I think if you already bought a can, then we're making you switch, we just swap can.
Let's say, I think all the big issue is, when you have the smaller can that we've been selling, that can't be picked up, everything else is just moving to a different service.
You gotta go from the base services about. What is your small can now?
We need to, we, we need to stop selling the smaller cans, and.
I don't, I don't know, do we still sell, do we still sell smaller cans right now, currently?
We still have them right now.
So we just some that's.
Well, that's, well, depending on what y'all say tonight, because otherwise, we pick up smaller.
With the smaller cans now that we're getting back, that they won't use?
We would put them up for sale to.
Don't mean somebody will buy them?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just have to find somebody that usually.
All right.
I think another thing on this, Chuck, if we don't go this route, how many employees do we end up at, and how many trucks do we end up, we're gonna double ourselves at some point, and now it's not really cost effective.
We have close to, sorry, seven hundred houses, and they're three years, four years, or every two hundred years.
So, I'm looking at that standpoint, at some point, there's, there's twelve employees and we're running.
Yeah, well, that's when me and Chuck started talking about the third party, it was because of that, because we were looking, and I say it from this table all the time, that we need to be thinking five, ten, twenty years. And we were looking at the ten years, we were going, we're not gonna be six, we're gonna be fifteen employees, and we're gonna be running instead of.
I know what I'm talking about, but the nineteen year, I advertised for a trash truck driver, I got twelve. Real amazing, last time I had a time where a trash truck driver, yeah, more. A thing like that, the last three cycles of time to hire somebody to drive for the trash truck, driving for ten is getting very difficult. So even the other providers that we talked to, you know, they're recruiting from other entities, and they're offering more money to come over.
That shouldn't drive a truck with a third one, that part of it was easier. What do we need to do?
You guys.
There's nothing, I just want to make sure this is.
We just want to hear y'all negatives, if they wasn't negative, if that one of us decided.
I've already used it. So.
Because if we go ahead and purchase this vehicle, like I said, it's gonna be about five to six months before it gets here, and then give us time to reevaluate what our, uh, rates will be going into twenty twenty seven, if we'll keep it the same all the way through twenty twenty six, allowing people to have the time to go.
So Chuck, you think the rates are gonna go up for money truck and dinner, or?
They'll, they'll go up for the people that only have two bags a week.
For me, who, I'm the bad customer, so they're gonna go up, right?
What is, what is your level?
I mean, I, one bag a week.
One bag a week?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's gonna go up.
Yeah.
It's gonna double.
That's fine, I mean, I, I'm serious.
So do you want, because I'm, so I'm sitting here thinking about what Doug said, and on whether or not you need to vote or not, and I guess we don't, but.
I'll bring back the resolution next month, not just the evening.
Okay, that gives y'all another thirty days to think about it, tonight.
Because if you're enmity against it, and you don't want to try that, then I'll have to go back and be vet for regular rear motor car.
I think it's the only choice to keep the sanitation going, be the latter, third party.
I should.
I don't think third party's a, our thing.
No, no, we don't.
I want employees, I want people.
I was, me and Chuck was very.
The ones we visited with, they still wanted us to do the customer service and the utility. Well, if you're still doing. Well, if you're still doing all the customer service, I'm taking all the blame. You can't fix the problem, cause somebody else. It's just creating another issue for the ladies that work in the.
They're taking the easiest part of the whole job there.
What the car, cars, garbage truck the other day, that was amazing how fast they went to pick that stuff up. I just stayed behind, just to watch.
And I used to, I used to be a waste man, so. And when you have inclement weather and they don't run, they don't make it up.
Definitely.
And I had inclement weather two weeks in a row, so I had three weeks where the trash stacked up in the back of my truck. Cycled into the dumpster, and they had enough room, so, but yeah, third party providers, they don't make it up when they miss a route.
Yeah, they don't, they don't care.
All right, anything else, sir?
Nope, that's it on sanitation. Thank you.
Street department, Audrey Wilson.
Audrey, check.
Uh, cautious to talk about the downtown street project tonight. I did receive messages, close to four o'clock this afternoon from our consultant. Uh, R Doc had been in conversation with them several times this afternoon, and they are optimistic about being able to go to bid the first week of October. So, fingers crossed, uh, we should have your approval for the uh, acquiring funds next week.
And our guy has signed off on all right away.
Yeah, they they tried to get it by the end of this week, and she said that I'd be reluctant to say yes, but maybe a bit later next week. She's.
That that's done through, like you're saying.